Good evening, everyone. This is a committee as a whole and we're here to talk about Council Bill 22-0195, Inclusionary Housing for Baltimore City, sponsored by the councilwoman to my left, Odette Ramos. In chambers right now, we have Chairman Stokes, the sponsor of the bill, councilwoman Odette Ramos, Councilman Zeke Cohen, as well as Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District. From the mayor's office, we have, I'm sorry, I always forget your name. Sophia, yeah, Sophia G., right? And we have Sophia G., and we have our Deputy CFO, Mr. Bob Sendamay. And we have a cast of characters from the Department of Housing. I will not try to go through all the names, but at this time, I recognize Chairwoman, Commissioner of the Housing Department. Madam Commish?
Hi, good evening, everyone. With me, Alice Kennedy, Commissioner, Department of Housing and Community Development. With me this evening, I have Stacy Freed, Executive Advisor to the Commissioner, as well as Stephanie Murdock, who is our Legislative Liaison in our Policy Department.
And then from the Housing Authority?
The Housing Authority, Crystal High-Polite.
Corliss Austin from Housing Choice Voucher Program.
Martin French from the Baltimore City Planning Department.
Thank you, Mr. French. And then also from my office, we have Nikki Thompson, as well as the General Counsel, Erin DeGraffin-Right, will be joining us. I believe this is our fifth hearing on this very, very important topic. I think that there's been a lot of work to get us to this point. I think that there are multiple sides and individuals that have been involved to date. This bill has been spearheaded by, again, Councilwoman Odette Ramos. I think the biggest point for us tonight, what we would like to get done, is ensuring that all of the amendments that are before us are properly heard, and we're all on the same page as it relates to where they stand. I do not think or see us voting out any of the amendments tonight, but with that, I'm going to turn it over to the bill sponsor.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you very much for giving this very important bill, you know, the emphasis that it needs. Councilman Conway has also joined us from the Fourth District. So what we wanted to do today is, we're going to go over every single amendment and just make sure that the committee is clear and offer the opportunity for the Department and Finance to chime in on these amendments. And then we will have, we should have, a conversation around the last particular piece that's missing, which is the 15 percent credit and where we are on that, if that's all right. So everybody should have in front of them version 10 of the amendments packet, as well as an interlineated copy of the bill. And we're just going to go through each amendment, and I'll, you know, entertain any questions that any of the committee members may have, and also share where there may be some changes. This is the same version that you saw in December, okay? There are no, there are no changes. So Amendment Number One is in the, basically the preamble, as well as the beginning of the bill, so it's re-numeration only. Amendment Number Two just clarifies what we mean by Commissioner. In the original bill, it said Housing Commissioner through the whole bill, and we just wanted to make sure that we're clear that when we say Commissioner, we're seeing the Commissioner of Housing and Community Development. Remember, just as an aside, the bill that we introduced in February of last year did a lot to take out from the original inclusionary bill. Some things were putting back in, and some things were redefining. So that's why it's an extremely confusing bill, but you will be able, we'll be able to get through it. Amendment Number Three just clarifies, and you'll have to excuse us, the reprint is not exactly on the same pages as the amendments, and that's just simply because it is a reprint. And so I'm on page three of the reprint. Let's see here, okay. Okay, so page three of the reprint is basically a lot of the stuff that we came, that came out, and continues to be out. Page four of the reprint at the top is Amendment Number Three, which clarifies that what we mean by major public subsidy is grants or loans that equal or exceed 5 percent of the project costs, that we also mean tax credits, and that we also mean any other fund sources or financial assistance provided by the city as determined by any rule or regulation under this subtitle. So that's what we mean by, by the major public subsidy. We also add on page five, which is Amendment Number Four, that a significant land use authorization is also in consideration. So basically, we're in the definition part of the bill, but as you'll see later on, when we talk about what types of developments have to comply with this, it is the, any development that's 20 or more units, that's getting this significant public subsidy or a significant land use authorization, which could be, like, for instance, in my district, we have a PUD, and the developer wants to have two more floors, and so I would have to provide a variance in order to do that. But in order to do that, they would have to also get, comply with the inclusionary bill. So that's an example of what we're talking about here. Does that make sense? Okay. Anyway, so that's on the definitions side. Amendment Number Five is basically, it's on page six. It clarifies what we mean by extremely low, very low, low and moderate income, so that what we mean by extremely low is anybody who is 30 percent or below area median income. Very low is 50 percent or below area median income. Low income is 60 percent of area median income, and moderate is 80 percent. So that's what that is. You'll see that the brackets were taken off because in the original bill, we had some other percentages, so we basically put those back in. Amendment Number Six is also on page six, where we add very low or extremely low income. In the original bill, we were just going to limit this to low income and moderate income. So in this bill, we add back in very low and extremely low income. So that's in the definitions as well. Eligible households. Amendment Number Seven is basically anybody of these incomes, just to be clear about who is eligible. Are we all good so far? I'm kind of all about, so I just want to make sure everybody's...
Councilwoman? I just have a question.
Sure.
Can you explain to what extremely, extremely very low is?
Yeah, so extremely low is 30 percent of AMI. So those are folks hardest to house. Most of them are also experiencing homelessness. And then we have very low income, which is 50 percent or below AMI. And these percentages aren't what we made up, these are HUD percentages. So it's consistent with, with the Housing Authority and with HUD.
So is it going to be spelled out and just, I mean, what the percentage is?
Yes, it's in the, it's in the bill and in these amendments. Yep, mhm, yep. So, yeah, so actually, Mr. Chair, you were going right there, because later on, the next amendments are even spell it out even further, that extremely low income is, is 30 percent or more, or below AMI. So you'll see that in the definitions on page seven, and that's consistent with Amendment Number Eight. Amendment Number Nine, what do we do here? Amendment Number Nine is on page eight at the bottom. We're basically moving, I think we're moving this portion around, so that it's still out of this portion of the bill, but is moved to another portion of the bill. Is Ben here? Ben's not here, okay. So that, this portion is actually, actually removed, if you look at where the brackets are. So we remove that from the bill. Amendment Number Ten is re-numeration. Yep, re-numeration. Amendment Number Eleven, we had taken out of the original bill, a significant part of the rules and regulations, because initially, we had it kind of spelled out, that there would be a manual, and it would do specific things. The guidance from the Law Department was just that the department shall compile rules and regulations and put them in a manual. So that's what this, that's what this does. It adds the manual in. Right, so if you look at page 11, B2, 2B5, we had actually taken out the inclusionary manual and had put it under the rules and regulations. So Amendment Number, okay, so Amendment Number Twelve is new language. The original bill did not have anything in about the inclusionary board, because we were originally going to keep the same board. Out of, in negotiations with DHCD, there was a clear that we wanted to make the board fewer people and a little bit more manageable, and so that's what Amendment Number Twelve does. It is, it reestablishes the inclusionary board, and it makes it nine members. Four members, hold on a second, let me make sure I get this right. So, so that it goes down to Section B qualifications general. One must be a representative of a nonprofit, one must be a neighborhood association leader... Oh, no, I'm sorry. We cut all that out, I'm sorry. All the brackets and the underlines are very confusing. There we go. Yeah, I'm on page 13 of the bill, so that it says...
But I think you were going over the amount that House comprised.
Mhm, yeah. So we took, we basically had to put back in the bill, the old board, strike it, and put in the new board. So the new board starts on the bottom of page 12 of the reprint. Two must have experience of the field, in the field of housing, community development, planning, social services, or public health. Two must be lenders with experience in community development or affordable housing. One must be a renter earning an income at or below 60 percent. One must be a renter earning at or below 30 percent. One must have legal experience with fair housing. One must have legal experience in affordable housing finance or affordable housing development. One must be a nonprofit affordable housing developer, and one a for-profit multi-housing developer. And so that way, we get a range of folks who are experienced in this work to be on the inclusionary board. Not like there wasn't before, but it's a little bit more manageable than, than it was. So, yes.
I just have a question. This is citywide inclusionary housing. It's good to have those persons with experience, but where is the community at on this?
Right.
Because it's really going to affect them. And if you're talking about a citywide program, and you only have how many people?
It is a nine-member board.
Nine members?
No.
Just a suggestion. It's 14 council people here? Maybe you can put in there, appoint one person from each community to sit on that board also. Just a suggestion. Because it's citywide, and you're looking at nine people, that's not a whole lot of people, and it's not the makeup of a whole, of Baltimore City, if it's a citywide program.
There should be nine here.
And I'm counting 10. I'm counting 10 on this. You hear me?
Yes, I hear what you're saying, that you, you're counting 10. You're correct. So we have to go back and fix this math, because it should be nine.
And then the composition. Are all 10 from the mayor, or what's the...
Yeah, so they would be all appointed through the normal process that we have, which is that they're nominated by, we can give them names, and then they're nominated by the mayor and appointed and approved by...
So none from the Housing Commissioner or the Planning Director?
And so I know the direct, Commissioner was interested in a seven-member board, I believe, is that right? Yeah, or nine? You wanted five, well, we had...
So I thought that we were at five, I think.
We were at, I thought we were at nine. So we'll, we'll go back on the board to make sure that we have what we need. I think, Councilman, to your question, we wanted to put in here, the, this renter earning an income at 60 percent and renter earning income at 30 percent is our, you know, community folks. But certainly, now that we have to go back and do the math on this, you know, want to take into consideration your comment about making sure that there might be some more community folks here. So I appreciate that. Okay? That's why we're going through it all, to make sure we get it right. So I do appreciate it. All have to be, let's see, so the board, the mayor designates a chair, and the board designates a vice chair and other officers, and all of the various standard language about boards and commissions is here. So that's where we are on the board. If you look at page 14 of the reprint, it has, the capital letters are what we added in the original bill, and then the strikes are what we have changed. This is all reporting on what the department has to report to, to the mayor and city council, and post on the website, and file the report with Department of Legislative Reference. So that is the reporting requirements. And then the duties. So Amendment 14 is still more on the reporting requirements. And then also, further duties of the board includes reviewing and approving regulations, reviewing and providing comments on inclusionary housing plans. Because the way this would work is that when a development is submitting their plan for the development, that they have to also submit an inclusionary plan, which has to be approved by the inclusionary board. The board would review annual reports, and, oh, this should not say Planning Director. Would also, you know, provide feedback to the Commissioner on, on this. Okay, here comes the meat of the bill. Amendment Number 16 is where, so Section 2B31, which is on page 16 of the reprint, and I'm on Amendment 16, oh, wait, maybe I should stop. Any other questions or anything so far? Because we're getting to the meat of it now. Okay. All right. So inclusionary requirements, that this bill is for residential dwelling units, development projects that are 20 or more units. And you'll see on page 16, it receives, that receives a major public subsidy or a significant land use authorization, and that is newly constructed, wholly renovated, or converted from a residential building. That is consistent with the high-performance tax credit that's used now, and just sort of lets us know what we're really looking at here in terms of the developments that we're, that we're looking at. So that is Amendment 16, to clarify those things. We also, on Amendment 17, have, on Amendment 17, we have clarity that this is for rent. We'd have to put in another bill for ownership units. So this is just for rental, we're just talking about today. So that clarifies that. And then Amendment Number 18, which is on page 17, this piece basically says that if there's additional subsidy for affordable units for very low or extremely low income, so this is 50 percent or below AMI, that if there's additional subsidy to house that population, then an additional 5 percent of the dwelling units need to be inclusionary units. We do not define what additional subsidy is. It could be vouchers, it could be additional, you know, tax credit, whatever it is, but that only if that's available, would the development have to, you know, provide that additional 5 percent. So that's to try to reach the 50 percent or below area median income, which we know that's the highest demand for, for affordable units.
Is that specific, is that specific to city subsidy, or...
It just says, offered an additional subsidy, or offered the opportunity to apply for additional subsidy. So it's not specific to whether or not it's state, federal, or anything else.
If it's like brownfield, that would apply here?
And that's specifically to house this population as well. If you look on page 17, that bullet three, it's not in the amendments, but this is one of the things that we're still working on, is the total number of affordable units required for each residential project, subsequent to this section. Remember that we have been talking about that this should be for, all 10 percent of the units have to be 60 percent or below area median income. We still have in here that half of it would be for 80 percent of AMI, which we know from talking with the advocates and others, that 60 percent is where we want to be. So that would be something that we need to change in further versions of the, of the And let me just back up to just be clear. On page 16 of the reprint, affordable units required in every residential project, subsequent to this section, at least 10 percent of all dwelling units for rent. So just to be clear that we have the 10 percent, which we, is lower than what the original bill was. The original bill from 2007 was 20, 20 percent, and that was obviously taking into consideration some of the recommendations that we had, we had heard.
And Councilwoman, I'm sorry.
Yes, go ahead.
Am I hearing that the amendment that we don't have yet is to change the 50 percent to 60 percent on...
So what...
17?
Yeah, so thanks for the opportunity to clarify. So what this, this basically says is that 50 percent of the units have to go to 80 percent, because moderate income is defined later, earlier in the bill, as 80 percent. This needs to be removed.
Change to what, is what I'm asking?
Well, we would just remove it, so that all of them go to 60 percent. Yeah.
Gotcha. So we would strike out moderate income and make that 60 percent?
And make it 60 percent, whatever we defined as 60 percent. Now, we know that that's still something that is, still to be negotiated, because the funding source that was suggested by the enterprise report was that it would be a tax credit of 15, 15 percent for the, the units, and half of them would go to 80 percent, and half of them would go to 60 percent. And that, I know the advocates have been clear that we want to keep it at 60 percent. So this might be something that we end up having to play with a little bit. Okay?
Meaning that 15 percent would have to increase slightly?
Well, we're going to talk about that in a second. So, I mean, my first thought here is to go back to making sure that this goes to, you know, that all the units are for 60 percent of AMI, like we had to talk about.
Yeah, I was just saying, the delta between the 80 percent and the 60 percent, seems like the subsidy would have to be increased.
That's what the enterprise report is saying, that if we just keep it at 60 percent of AMI, that we might, that there would be, there may need to be more subsidy, because it may not cover that cost. It just depends on the math that we're using. So we, can we come back to that?
Yeah.
So that we can go through the rest of the amendments, and then we want to come back to this whole point about the funding source and the 60 and 80 percent?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right. But yeah, let's, let's keep that in mind. Amendment 19, so we take out most of the stuff on page 18. Amendment 19 can be found on page 19 of the reprint, which basically says that this bill, this is the part where it says more restrictive governs, which basically says that this bill is a floor, it is not a ceiling. So that if there's, you know, someone that comes to us with a TIF, or that there's more negotiating to be done on major projects, that the 10 percent units, it should be a floor, not a ceiling. So that this gives an out for the, and, you know, when we're negotiating big projects, that they're not restricted to just the 10 percent. And then exclusions, it was clear that not all multi-unit properties would fit here, so like dormitories that are on school campuses, fraternities or sororities, rental, residential care facilities. And then there's a discussion around student housing, that's not defined in the zoning code. I did get guidance from the Law Department that we wouldn't have to define it in the zoning code, that we could define it, whatever student housing is here. And the idea is that student housing, you know, sometimes it's suites, sometimes it's, you know, marketed in a certain way, and then also, you know, there's already some discounts in some student housing as well. So that isn't, the student housing part is not in here, and we'll, we will add it in Page 20 and 21 of the reprint, all that is taken out, taken out, taken out. Okay. Let me see here. So page 24 of the reprint is Amendment Number 20, and it basically goes through the process of, you have to put in your inclusionary plan, the inclusionary plan requirements, affirmably fair, affirmative fair housing mark... affirmatively, fair, affirmative fair housing marketing, so that the developer would still have to market to those who are least likely to lease, and the approval of the inclusionary plan by the inclusionary board. So that is what amendment twenty is. Amendment twenty-one, we are going to strike because that was old language around the developer having to approach the city to ask for the fifteen percent credit, or mark, or parking requirements, or density bonus. And we can go through how we ended up negotiating that, but, so twenty-one, we will be striking and possibly replacing with reference to the tax credit once we, once we get there. Amendment twenty-two is remuneration. Amendment twenty-three is on page twenty-seven, and that basically strikes all the language that we had in here about fair housing and non-discrimination, and not that we shouldn't do it, but just in case those laws change, or the references change, we just put regular, general language here about all residential projects created under this subtitle are subject to applicable federal, state, and local housing regulations. So that's where that comes from. So amendment twenty-four is the annual report. So a developer of a residential project has to do an annual report to show compliance with the law, and so these are reporting requirements. We need to add one requirement, which is about the marketing activities to those least likely to lease. So that would need to be included in the reporting that the developer does at the end of, well, not at the end, but every year, which goes into the annual report of the, that the department puts together. Almost done with the amendments. Amendment twenty-five, this is remuneration, this is all, the rest of it is remuneration. There's nothing substantive. Oh, here we go, hold on a second. Okay. So, this is, okay. Amendment twenty-seven, which is on page fourteen of the amendment packet, and thirty-two of the bill. Where is it? Where is it? Where is it? Okay, I'm sorry, it's page thirty of the bill. It has master leasing for affordable units. So what this means, and this is done in other jurisdictions, that for, the, the city may designate providers who could enter into a lease, a master lease with the developer to manage the inclusionary units. And that's mostly applied to those that are, that are, that it's, it's an option, so that if the developer doesn't want to manage those units, that they could have a master lease with somebody to manage them.
Why is that needed?
So this is based, this is two things. One is that the, especially for the units that are thirty, fifty percent or below area median income, there may need to be additional supports. And so the, the management companies and others that are used to, you know, managing those population might be interested, the developer might be interested in getting a partnership with them. This is also something that in Montgomery County, the HOC does, is that for the units fifty percent or below area median income, they enter into a master lease so that they can, you know, provide those extra supports and, and manage as, as needed. So that's an option, it's a may.
Yeah, I don't, I don't necessarily have a concern with extra support or wraparound services, but I do have a concern of like separate but equal. So if, these are the only folks that this subset, ten percent, fifteen percent, twelve percent, and the entire apartment building are dealing with, it appears that we're trying to, again, separate them from the, from the apartment. I mean, we've talked about this before, we've seen projects like as close as Washington DC where they segregate all the units to a new phase of the building, or one side of the building, or one half of the building. And I just think that this kind of fits in line with that type of mentality. So I am not supportive of, like, having a total different set, you know, leasing agent and, and folks that are on a routine basis dealing with these residents, that the idea is that they kind of fit into the overall construct and fabric of the building.
Right, and that's the intent, is that they would be all over the building and not just, you know, separated into one area. So I appreciate that, and we can certainly look at that, look at that again.
Yeah. No, again, not just about placement, but about also the, the operation and the management of the building. Should all be the same for all tenants of the building.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you for that. Okay. And then page thirty-two of the reprint is amendment number twenty-nine, is amendment twenty-eight and twenty-nine. So this is affordability period, which we're having some disagreement about. Currently, the bill says that the affordability period of the units is thirty years, and that the clock restarts every time there is new majority control. So often, these buildings get sold, you know, multiple times, and so we wanted the clock to restart so that the affordability period doesn't stay with the property, it stays with the, it, it changes, you know, it's, I'm sorry, it stays with the property and not with the ownership. And so the question is, you know, how does the subsidy work when there's, you know, that kind of change? So we, that's one of the things to discuss, is how that, how that would work.
Now, the subsidy, real quick, is for ten years, though, right?
We, well, we're discussing that right now. We will discuss that when we get to the subsidy. Is it ten, is it fifteen?
It's currently written, how is it?
We don't have anything in here right now, but basically what this bill does is any jurist, any development that's getting current subsidy has to comply. We're still in discussion about what that fifteen percent would look like, and how long it is, and that, that piece of it. And so we'll go into that, but yeah, that's, that's one of the things we need to discuss, is how does this mesh with the affordability period? It's important to keep folks, you know, this as affordable as possible, because I'd hate to be at the end of thirty years, and then it's like, okay, see ya, that's not going to work. So we want to be able to, you know, make sure that there's a, something there. So that's still something that we're discussing. And then, that is pretty much it. We have the, some remuneration. Also, just wanted to acknowledge our colleague, Councilwoman Porter is here as well. So I think we do have some, it sounds like we've got some work to do on this master leasing piece, as well as just get clarity on the inclusionary board. But in general, I think we're, we're, everybody's clear on where we are on the amendments? Okay. The, so the next piece that still needs to be discussed, and I think this is where we would bring in finance and, and DCD, is, is this, this gap. So last meeting, we discussed that there is the difference between the market rent and what sixty percent of, and what sixty percent of AMI would pay, which is about seventeen hundred dollars for a family of four, so it's a little less for, less family size, which I don't really understand that math, but that's what, where we are. And so how do we fill that gap? Because that's, even though these developments are already getting subsidy, that there was that gap. So we've been in discussions for the last month, basically, or so, about how to fill that gap. The Enterprise report was clear that they were recommending a fifteen, one-five percent additional tax credit to whatever subsidy is already being provided. The recommendation is also for the fifteen, one-five percent would apply. We have ten, ten percent of the units, half of them for sixty percent of AMI, half of them for eighty percent of AMI, and that it would be limited to just the, the core market areas of the city. The, the discussion has been that we want to house sixty percent of AMI, and not go all the way up to eighty at first leasing, right? I mean, obviously, as people's incomes go up, we don't want, we're not going to kick them out. So, you know, we may end up with, with eighty, but that the first leasing should be sixty percent of AMI, and that it was clear, it sounded like to me from my colleagues that wanted to have this go citywide, and then also, we still need to discuss the, the time limit. I have put into drafting a separate tax credit that would be using the authority that the high-performance tax credit gave to us, which is basically for green buildings, high-performance buildings. The state gave us authority to create tax credits to incentivize having green buildings. And so this, the previous council, and the one before that, put together the high-performance rental credit, the targeted tax credit, and the new construction tax credit under a high performance. So the proposal is to create the include, the high-performance inclusionary tax credit that would just be the main qualification, being that it's a green building, and that it would help to fund the units in this bill. The way we have it structured now, it would not be tied to the high-performance rental, meaning that you, even if you get some other subsidy, you would, you could still get the fifteen percent. In this way, we don't have to go to the, to the General Assembly to get a new tax credit. So the discussions have been a lot in the last few days to try to come to a consensus, and we don't have that yet. So I wanted to give the finance and the Commissioner a chance to talk a little bit about kind of where things are, and the sort of justification for what we still need to, what we need to do.
A real quick, just quick clarification.
Yeah.
I guess with the strategy of how we're employing it now, of utilizing the high-performance tax credit, it's fair to say that we would always need the high-performance tax credit to do the high-performance inclusionary housing tax credit.
Nope.
No. So the high-performance could go away. So say if it like sunsets in five years, or whenever it sunsets, we will still have the high-performance inclusionary housing tax credit.
Correct.
Correct.
That's correct. We wanted to separate them.
Gotcha.
Yep.
No, I, I know we separated, but we did it under the guise of high-performance. So I was just wondering, if that went away, would we still be able to utilize another tax credit, even though the main tax credit has gone away?
Yes, yes. Yep, mm-hmm. Yep. Bob, did you want to?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Bob Sannemi, Department of Finance. So just a couple comments I wanted to make, just kind of where, where I think we are. You know, going back to the Enterprise report, I, I'm looking at it now on my, my screen, you know, it's pretty clear that it, they, the Enterprise report says that projects outside of the core submarket are infeasible, meaning financially infeasible. So, and the, the current bill in its current form is, is more aggressive, as we're discussing, than what's in the Enterprise report. So I think where, where we think about this is, where we stand, I guess, on this at the moment is, you know, we don't feel like it would be smart for the city to go beyond the recommendations of the Enterprise report. I think that puts a lot of risk into the market. You have projects that, with those additional requirements, that, that, at sixty percent AMI, when we look at the numbers, the cost, the lost rent is not made up by just a fifteen percent tax credit. And so if we put something in place, as the bill is today, we just kind of fear that there are some projects that would not be able to move forward, including some in these strong submarkets, not the core submarkets, the, the, the really strong areas, but the stronger, or even lower areas where, you know, we have a, we have a chance, and we're seeing some development in those areas. And the Enterprise report talks about, we're seeing some development in the north part of downtown, at some places outside of kind of what we think of as the, as the harbor-adjacent neighborhoods are the really strong areas. So we, we looked at the numbers, we've tried to vet them and tried to make sure they make sense with, you know, what we're seeing in the market, just checking rents at certain buildings. And, you know, again, our analysis shows that at sixty percent, the, the cost to somebody is just more than what they'll get from this fifteen percent tax credit. What the report does say is that you can do it in these core submarkets, and so there are areas where you can do it, and you can even do sixty, a split of sixty and eighty percent at AMI. The, the other concern, I guess, we have is also around the affordability period, so, and I, I think Alice has alluded to this, too, just, I'm struggling to figure out how, if I'm a, if there's a property that gets a ten-year tax credit, but it still has this requirement on it, that person sells that building to somebody else, that owner of that property still has to make the financials work. So if they have this longer-term requirement that the, the rents remain at affordable levels, or at some level of affordability, the question is if they don't get any of the subsidy, because the subsidies run out, how do they make that project work? So, you know, we have concerns about the thirty-year affordability, too, if it makes sense for a property owner that takes over a property, and it's a multifamily building, and they have to make the, the finances work and the rent work, what they would do at that point. And again, the fear is that if this requirement is in place, maybe somebody can manage a building for the first ten years, and then after that, it's just not a viable financial proposition from that point on. So I think we have to talk through the, the thirty-year affordability in conjunction with the ten-year tax credit, which still, I just struggle to kind of reconcile those two things.
We, the Enterprise report doesn't say ten years. What does it say for the, for the tax credit? What does it recommend? Because right now, we can make it, we could-
It recommends, it recommends, I'm sorry, recommends fifteen percent, but it's, again, it's only in those core, only in those core submar-
Yeah, yeah, but it doesn't, it doesn't, like, we're not limited to ten.
Why is ten imprinted in my brain as well? Where's ten percent, where did ten years come from?
Yeah, I mean, the current, the current market rate rental, the high-performance market rate rental is ten, okay?
Oh, and we're talking about doing it together.
Well, but it's not, because if you look at the statute, we, it says, you know, section, you know, one section is the high-performance market rate tax credit. The next section is the high-performance market rate, or targeted tax credit. And then the next section is the high-performance new construction tax credit. And we just create a new section that says inclusionary, and it's, and the, the authorization given to us by the state is broad. It doesn't say ten years. It doesn't say ten years. So we've been using ten years, yeah. We don't have to limit it to ten years. The, you know, the high-performance market rate rental is eighty percent of tax credit in the first five years, and then it tapers down for, for ten years. So we're not limited to ten years.
Deputy Director, when you come back for our next work session, can you bring some of that modeling, and some of those examples, and just, so we can kind of cover it and go over it as, as a team?
Sure.
I mean, I think you, you put a, a lot of numbers out there. It'd be cool to just actually see, like, the modeling and the projections that you guys are coming up with.
Yeah, and I can share with you just some of the, the, the numbers at the moment, but again, I, I think even separate from the numbers, before we get into more of the detail, I just, I don't understand how a property owner that purchases, that has that property in year eleven, how do they, how do they make that work if the tax credit was all burned off by the person that first owned the property? So I, I, you know, and maybe there's, maybe there, maybe there's an answer to that from either, you know, us putting our heads together, or kind of the development community of ideas, but I just don't understand how somebody could buy that in that year after the tax credit and make that project work if they're still required to have a certain number of units below, below market rate. If I was a buyer, why would I, why would I purchase that building when I can purchase another building that doesn't have those requirements?
Yeah, but it's the same thing if they use the high-performance market rate rental, and they purchased a building after, you know, nine years. Do they get a chance to apply for it again? Do they get a chance to apply for it again? It's the same question.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's a fair point, right.
Right, so, you know, you can't, I mean, one of the things that's been a little frustrating here is that, you know, we have these tax credits that have just, and, and we've talked about this, and we know that they need reform, but they're running rampant. And here we are wanting to limit this one just because, you know, we may not be able to afford it. Well, we can't afford those other tax credits either. So I just don't know, I mean, and, and so the, the case that's being made in terms of, well, how can somebody, you know, afford, well, that, that tax credit are, the high-performance tax credit already goes away after ten years and they're still being able to do the project. So I guess the fact is that the, you know, they're not, they're not getting tax liability for a long time, which helps them save the money to be able to do, you know, the project moving forward. Um, so it's the same thing.
Well, I would, I would say two things to that. One is that for these type of projects, there is a larger tax credit in the early years, but there's kind of a buildup period where you have to, you know, you're not going to fully lease the building in the first year, right? So I think part of the design of that credit, um, and I wasn't here when that credit was established, but I, you know, looking back at the, the documents, I think part of it was the idea that you have to kind of build up until you can get to kind of a reasonable leasing level. The other thing is, um, on our other tax credits, I agree, I mean, we've talked about this before. I agree that some of them deserve some scrutiny. And, you know, we've, we've said all along that we're, we think that there are some incentives needed to make building happen here, but the, the amount of the credit is something that we should look at, and maybe that should be tiered across, you know, different neighborhoods to make sure we're not oversubsidizing in one and undersubsidizing in another. We had this very discussion about the CHAP tax credit the other day where we do hundred percent subsidy everywhere. And I said, I don't think that makes sense. But we still think that tax credits in many cases are needed to have building happen here. And the difference between this additional fifteen percent and those others is that, you know, again, if, if you don't get the incentive right, that, you know, you don't have the revenue at all potentially, right? So I think there are situations where we are oversubsidizing, but i- if you do not get the credit right, you might have a building that just, you know, some kind of development that doesn't happen at all. With this particular requirement, you're just adding costs. With our base tax credits, we're trying to figure out what's the right mix to make sure that we actually get development to happen. And that ultimately brings new net revenue into the city, even though we don't get all of it in the first few years because we're incenting of it, but because we're incenting it, but it, but there's revenue that comes with those developments. Here, we're saying, once a development is built, we're, 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 it's all cost to the city. There's no revenue with this, this additional fifteen percent. It's all cost to the city, and the city's bearing that cost. And, you know, presumably too, as buildings get built, if you're adding, if you're adding a fifteen percent of cost onto a new project, the next year, you're adding an additional fifteen percent onto a new building, but you're still paying for the fifteen percent on the first one, and then the third year, and so on. So to me, what it looks like, it just looks like a slowly growing cost over time, where we're essentially paying a portion of people's rent in any building that has happened since date X, which would be whenever this bill would, would go forward. So I, I, I totally agree with you on the need to scrutinize our existing subsidies, but I do think it's a little bit different than this bill, because this bill, again, is just adding cost where our other subsidies, we're trying to get the amount right and the percentage right so that we actually make the development happen in the first place.
Uh, no, I, I see where that's, um, coming from. I just think that, um, you know, obviously, this is something that's, you know, super important to the, to the city, and we need to figure out how to make it work. So if it's, you know, scrutinizing the other tax credits to be able to balance, if it's, um, you know, figuring out a different formula that ends up working, that's kind of where we, where we are. And I think the, you know, we've been clear that, um, you know, we, the biggest need, and you can see it in the, um, the, the report that came out, the study that came out in 2020, the, the statewide, um, uh, needs assessment, that if you look at where Baltimore is and what we need in 2030, the actual, you know, units are actually fifty percent or below area median income is what we really need. So, but this is an important piece of, you know, that puzzle to be able to make sure that we have mixed-income communities. And if it's that, if it's important to the city, which it's important to us, then we need to figure out the best way to do it. So I, so I understand where you're coming from, because it's going to be a compounded fifty percent, fifteen, one-five percent, depending on, you know, how many developments come online. You know, maybe they don't end up needing them. I mean, in some cases, it's, it's like financial aid, right? I mean, what we do in financial aid is that the full pays pay for the folks that don't pay full pay. I mean, that's not always the case, but it's in a lot of the cases. So do we provide that initial subsidy for that long? And then the math ends up working out because, you know, they've been able to have the subsidy in the beginning, and then, you know, after year fifteen, um, or whatever we choose, you know, that math should end up working out because all those other expenses that they had at the outset are, are no longer, right? They were able to pay the debt service, they were able to pay all these other things. So that's, you know, kind of how I, how I see it. So if the issue is just, you know, the, somebody, um, sells the property at year ten, and so the high performance is gone by that time, it's gone.
Right.
Right? You know, how long does that fifteen percent, you know, basically stay? And does it, does it start over, right? I mean, sure, that's a good question. Like, that's something that we should definitely, definitely think about.
Yeah, I would just, two, two quick things.
Sure.
And, you know, happy to hear, of course, HCD's perspective, they're close to this as well. But, um, you know, the enterprise report does say that if you would have had this, this subsidy in the core submarkets, you would have, you would have had units built over the past ten years. So, I mean, what, what the report says and what we've been kind of standing behind is that you can pass a law that's a little bit more restrictive, and you will very likely have affordable units built. Understand too, from my perspective, just in my role, understand why I'm a little bit more risk averse on something like this. Like, I go to meetings every day where I hear about all the things that we can't afford to do, right? I just got out of a union negotiation where people are like, why can't you pay our frontline people more? I hear a lot of you say that many times. We know that there's going to be costs for education that we've talked about, and next year is going to be another big jump for us. So all the, we have to connect these things, they all come out of the same pot. And if I, if we take an action, again, we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow. Nobody really knows for sure, right? But if we take an action and there's a couple of projects that don't happen because we got a little bit too aggressive on this, that's lost tax revenue, and that means we have less to spend on all those other things that I know are important to everybody in this room. So I just want folks to understand that we are a little bit more risk averse, I think, for, I think, a very good reason, because we see the struggles we're having just to balance our base budget and just to pay for all these other needs. And again, we're, I don't, I don't think the risk is worth it to extend it citywide when we have a proposal, or we've talked about a proposal, that's like, well, that's going to work and it's going to get us some units, and maybe we learn some things about what happens in that, you know, ten-year period while we, you know, you know, see what happens there and see if it works. But going too aggressive too fast, I think, could have a negative, a really negative impact. And, you know, again, I, we hear a lot of needs when I'm in this, when I'm in this building and in this, these chambers, but it's all connected, right? It's all new cost.
Right, well, I mean.
It comes out of the same, it comes out of the same budget.
Right, right. Well, and you've heard me say too, that we, you know, and we'll go into the vacant property stuff later in a different, you know, hearing, but obviously, investing in, making sure that those are rehabbed and get tax base is going to be super important too. So we have to, um, address that as well, and not just, you know, rental properties, but also making sure we have, you know, homeowners and, you know, people are moving into the city, and those of us who are renters can, you know, buy houses here. So there, it, the puzzle is bigger than just this, is, I think, what you're saying, but also, you know, how we have to look at it. And I'm clear, I'm, I'm conscious of the fact that the Kerwin mistake that was made in the, at the state level with the, the numbers is, is going to cost us a bunch of money. But hopefully, we can convince the state to help us.
But there's only one pot of money, it's called the general fund, right? So all these things hit the same pot, so, um, and, you know, just one, one more thing to, to think about too is, I mean, there is, again, I'm not a housing market expert by any stretch, but, you know, if you, if you don't have developments happen because of something like this, then you have a smaller supply of housing, kind of bumps up the, the rents for everybody. So there, I mean, there is a possibility that if we get too aggressive, it backfires, and we ended up with, we end up with market rents that are even higher because we're restricting the supply. So I mean, that's something, you know, I've read about a lot, it's happening all over the country. You know, there's not a great supply of housing in some places, it's driven up rents. We've seen it here, we've seen it other places. So that, that's a risk too, that we could end up, you know, kind of shooting ourselves in the foot with a policy where we're trying to get more affordable, but we actually make it less affordable in some cases. And again, nobody can predict exactly how that's going to happen, but I think that's another, you know, consideration that we just have to be careful here about how aggressively we go, because there could be impacts on the general fund, on the market and as a whole, just on general affordability in, in the city for folks.
Yeah, no, and I, and I understand that. And I just think, you know, if we look at a broader, you know, affordable housing plan, so we can put all of the pieces together and investment, I think that's, that's critical. Just, this is really important for so many people in our city. This is important to, obviously, this council, because we put, brought it forth. So that's, um, something that we need to, to also consider. I see the, um, CAO here, thank you very much for being here with us, appreciate it. So, um, that's all I have really. Mr. President, I mean, we, we needed to have the discussion around where we are on the funding and answer any questions that my colleagues would have as we move forward on trying to, um, get to where we're in a good place to, to finally move this, move this forward. But it is a, it is a priority. Obviously, our affirmatively furthering Fair Housing Plan that was submitted, you know, includes the inclusionary bill, so we have to have a bill. And, you know, obviously, want to help folks as well. I guess, actually, while HABC is here, you want to ask some que, yeah. So, um, before I take questions from my colleagues, I just wanted, since HABC is here, just to go back to a conversation that we had with them before. We have in this bill right now that, you know, if there's additional subsidy for people, for, for housing people, thirty percent or fifty percent or below area median income, that there would be an additional five percent. And one of the things that, um, HABC presented to me was, uh, one of the things that I was thinking about was, well, can't we do this by lowering the threshold to fifty percent and having, uh, project-based vouchers available for, uh, folks to apply? And so, um, Ms. Austin, you had talked about, you know, this idea of the, um, the payment standards and that that was an issue with, uh, doing something, um, like that?
So the payment standards are set basically from the fair market rents that are published by HUD. And if the payment standard for a one-bedroom unit, you know, when we spoke last week, we looked at a couple of different scenarios. If it's in a area that is, uh, say, a high area where the payment standard would be, say, sixteen hundred and the rent is eighteen hundred, we still could not approve that contract rent because we're bound to payment standards based on census tracts. We do, our payment standards now are at a hundred and twenty percent, up to a hundred, uh, one-ten through one-thirty-five. So.
That's a thirty, a hundred and thirty-five percent of area median income?
Um, no, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five percent of the FMRs, the fair market rents.
The fair market rents, okay.
Yes, so we only have two areas where those payment standards are high. That's Mount Washington, Fells Point. The rest of our payment standards are pretty much, uh, within one-ten, one-twenty, one-fifteen. So, uh, we would not be able to approve. So an example, if I give you an example about our payment standards, say a one-ten area, if the two-bedroom payment standard was eighteen hundred and the contract rent was two thousand, we would not be able to approve it, even though the market says that that's the going rent. But however, based on our fair market rents that are published by HUD and us going to a hundred and ten, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty-five percent, we could not approve. So we, we're bound to stay within those, those, that number, whatever that number is.
So how does that work with, um, because my understanding is that vouchers are being provided in the Port Covington, um, area? And I'm sorry, I can't get over the, the new name, so we're just going to call it Port Covington for now. Right?
So, um, they have put in a project base, a, a RFP for our project-based vouchers that, uh, um, we will be distributed through that area. We have not, they've submitted their application, we haven't completed it, so I can't really comment on what those rents will be. They do know, they've received a copy of our payment standards, so they know what our payment standards are. So they may take, uh, some of their units. There's going to be a very, they're only asking for a very, very small number. So there's a possibility that they, we could award them based on the contract rents may be around thirty percent. Our, our, our participants would not pay more than thirty percent of their monthly income for those, uh, units. However, the contract rents would have to be within our payment standards, and they're aware of that. So now, I have not seen the, their submission as of yet, but I do know that they have submitted something to us.
Yeah, it was my understanding from, from talking with them, trying to figure out how they did their stack, because they do have inclusionary, um, included, and they, they have a bunch of tax credits, and one building is Lytec and all of that. So, um, they put a, a bunch of different things together, but that they had vouchers for the thirty percent of AMI requirement. So you're saying that they don't have them yet?
So they have applied to us. I have not seen the document to be able to, to comment on it, but I know that they have applied and we will, I was not on the review team, is what I should say. I do know that they've applied, and they know, they are very much aware that the rents would have to be within our payment standard for us to approve them.
Right, but they could, because they're obligated under the agreement, with the TIP agreement, they could, they could set the rents accordingly in order to comply, correct?
They could set the rents accordingly, but as I said, it, they would have to be within our payment standard for us to approve those contracts.
Yeah, but they could, they could say, yes, this is an important value to us, so we're going to, you know, we may set it slightly lower in order to make it work.
Correct, they could.
Yeah, okay.
Could you give us some examples of, uh, the payment schedule?
So our payment standards are, um, an example would be, and, and you're asking me a question, I kind of need to look at a piece favor.
Yeah.
No, you're fine.
If you wouldn't mind.
I just want a clarification for everyone listening, so they can kind of get a sense of what you're saying.
So our payment standards, I'm going to say, uh, at one-twenty, a hundred and twenty percent of the FMR. So when, once HUD publishes the FMR annually, we look at them and we determine based on our census tracts and all. So I'm giving you an example of a one-bedroom payment standard that's a hundred, uh, one thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. And that would be in maybe about three or four census tracts. That's not all throughout the city, but the majority of our units that are on our program are at a hundred and ten percent.
And a hundred and ten is sixteen hundred dollars a month?
So I, the, the, the one-bedroom is sixteen hundred, um, that's based on one-twenty, so, um.
What, like a two or three bedroom?
Thank you for.
Like a two or three bedroom?
A two-bedroom would be two thousand, a three-bedroom is twenty-six hundred. That's on one-twenty. And as I mentioned, that are, the majority of our units are within, um, the hundred and ten percent. So at a hundred and ten percent, um, a one-bedroom is fourteen ninety-five, two-bedroom eighteen, um.
Yeah, I just sent it to everybody on your email.
Three-bedroom would be about twenty-three hundred. But it also, it has to be rent, rent reasonable for the area, right? We, we don't lead the market, we follow the market. So we will do a rent reasonable testing to determine if the unit is rent reasonable for that area, that census tract. We look at, uh, curb appeal and amenities in a unit.
What, what's the determining factor for site base? What's the determining factors with, with your approved site base? I know it's a finite amount of vouchers you have, but what are the determining factors if you go with one project over another?
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat it?
I'm asking, what are, what's the determining factors of deciding whether a project gets site base or not?
So for, um, we're looking at, um, we do site and neighborhood standards. We're looking at their experience, the number of units that they would want to put on the program. There's a combination of their, their package in terms of their financing. And that's kind of pretty much it.
I would assume that inclusionary would be high on that, the list of determining factors, right?
So yes, it would be.
I mean, that's like a main principle of HUD.
Yes, that, that would be a part of the site and neighborhood standards. Wouldn't, we're not trying to, we're looking to lease in areas that, uh, the poverty level is low, the school rates, so we're looking at, um, a lot of that when we're doing a determination of adding, approving a project-based unit, project-based site onto our program.
So one would assume the, the site base, um, characteristics associated with the projects that we're talking about here probably would fit high on that list. that we're talking about here probably would fit high on that list.
Yes.
How many site base are we talking about? Like, like going into next year, how many new additional vouchers will be available?
So currently, if we're talking about project base?
Project base, correct.
So project base.
Is site base and project base the same?
Yes, yes. Yes. We currently have an R F P on the street for project-based units. We're at about, and I, I want to say maybe around one-seventy-five with our awards, so we only have about twenty-five left. We have, we do give commitments for project base if they're going through a competitive process, going through the state and they've been awarded light seat vouchers. So we would give, that's that competitive process that we're required to meet when we offer a project-based contract.
So when you say like a project-based contract, can, can it be like scattered site, meaning if it's a hundred and twenty-five, can fifteen go in this building, ten go in this building, seventeen go in that building out of that hundred and twenty-five?
Yes, we've done some scattered sites.
But that award is a multi-award. It's not to one person. It could be to ten different developers.
So we've done multi-scattered sites that have been to, under one contract, and we've done scattered sites that have been maybe various contracts. It really depends on what the developer is presenting.
Thank you. And you might not be able to answer this question, if not, fine, but is like a hundred and seventy-five, I think you said one-twenty-five or one-seventy-five?
I said one-seventy-five.
One-seventy-five. Is that like a, a good number to kind of go off of that? We've seen a good track record year over year?
Um, so we do, the, the project-based contract that, R F P that we have on the street is a rolling R F P. And recently, I'm gonna say in the last several years, we've, we've had a lot of interest. However, they didn't meet, many of them did not meet the site and neighborhood standards, so they would not fall into your inclusionary project. So we weren't able to award any vouchers there. Then also, there have been a few that have been put on hold for just due to the economy. So the interests, we, we see a lot of interest. However, in recent years, we haven't had, we haven't awarded a lot.
I, I'm thinking, committee, this is nothing for us to kind of really belabor tonight, but definitely would like to talk to you more about this. Councilwoman Ramos, you know, why wouldn't the site base, project base, be the focus of inclusionary housing? They come with vouchers. The lift that the city would have to provide potentially would fit well from a finance perspective, a lot better than what we've heard before. We're talking about a sizable increase of where we're at today. I mean, if, if we're able to do a hundred and seventy-five annually every year, and if it's inside the goal of what HUD is, and I know that not just Baltimore City, it's his, it's all, all throughout our entire country, we missed that mark of like utilizing these for like real inclusionary projects. I'm not saying that that's where I'm at right now, but I'm saying I think that we should definitely, when we start talking about the numbers and you come back with the modeling, I'm really interested to see why wouldn't we go in that direction? I'm not sure if we thought about that before, but I, I don't, I don't, I mean, have, have you thought about that before?
Yeah, I had a proposal, actually, to lower the threshold from sixty percent to fifty percent of A M I and that the, we would use, the developer would have to apply for the project-based vouchers as well as, I have a bill to expand the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which can only be used for fifty percent or below, and that that money could be utilized for additional units. The pushback, both from the D H C D and also from the advocates, was, well, we're gonna run out of money at some point, so we have to put in waivers. And I said, well, we're gonna get more units than we ever have.
When they say run out of money, like, we, we, there's not an infinite amount of vouchers out there.
Correct.
Is that what run out of money means?
Yeah, but also, for instance, just like Mr. Sennome and I were talking, you know, a new development has another tranche of folks that need to get vouchers. So you'd have to pay for the folks that already have vouchers and then the new people that get vouchers because of the new development. So at some point in time, even when we get more money into the trust fund and also as their, the vouchers are only allocated based on what the budget is every year, correct? Now, you don't kick people out, but you limit the, any new vouchers if you don't have enough money, is that correct?
Yeah, so that's why, that's why I was saying, like, that be the main focus, because we know that.
That's what I was thinking.
I mean, we have a hundred and seventy-five potentially, and, and again, it's not every single year, but you have a hundred and seventy-five. It's significantly subsidized because we have the money through the vouchers, which we might be able to come up with a, a really creative finance proposition to put on top of that.
So I would like to clarify that the hundred and seventy-five that I spoke about, that, that has, those are awards. So the balance that we have left to award is a very small number.
I think you said twenty-five, right?
Correct.
But then it starts back over the next year or no?
No, no. So the Housing Authority annually, we look at our budget that we've been given, we look at our commitments that we currently have for, that are out there for numerous years, and that's how we determine what the, the, the number that we want to set aside for an R F P or for special projects.
And that would just basically be a function of the amount of vouchers times those rent amounts that you communicated earlier, right? That, that's the equation of coming up with whatever that total budget is.
And the, the other pushback that we got also was that, you know, this is funding that, the, the vouchers and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is funding that can be used for, you know, we shouldn't be necessarily replacing the, this money because it can be used for, for other types of affordable housing units and not just inclusionary. So that was the other pushback on the, what I call the fifty percent proposal.
Yeah, I just say that, you know, we have, and again, this is not a Baltimore thing, this is the entire country, we fail so miserably at inclusionary housing. You know, if we can figure out a way where we can utilize this for inclusionary housing, to me, that would be a huge step in the right direction. I mean, definitely unconventional as it relates to things that we've done in the past. And, and we've heard from the testimony today that we have a hard time identifying the right projects because of the characteristics of the communities and neighborhoods in which folks are applying for these types of credits, these vouchers for.
Right, I just think that we, we would still need to, the, the bill that I have in play that hasn't gotten a hearing yet is the, right now, the yield tax to be able to fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is at transactions above a million dollars, it's a real estate transactions, and my bill just lowers the threshold to seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. We're still waiting on the analysis of how much that would bring in, because it also depends on the market.
That was gonna be my next question, right?
Yeah, because we made a boatload of money with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund the last couple of years because the market was so amazing. And what does that look like when it's not, right? So does that additional money that we get from lowering the threshold have to fill in for other things? So that's the, the main question. But the idea is just to try to be creative about, you know, what the resources we already have instead of, you know, always creating something new. So that was, that was, you know, we've been talking about, all of us for a while, and at some point, we just need to pick one.
Correct.
So that's kind of where we are.
Got it.
Anybody else with any ques, other questions?
I have a question. It's, it's more of an example. I'm just using, a unit cost of three thousand and the standard payment is fifteen hundred Where would the difference come from to make the developer whole based on their budget? Because I have persons, they call me, have vouchers. The voucher might be fifteen hundred dollars, but the rental is twenty-five. And they called me back because they can't even move, so I don't, I don't know if it's a question for the councilwoman first to find out, who's gonna pay for that? Where'd that gap come from? Well, housing, everyone answer?
So the Housing Authority could not fill that gap. We would not be able to approve that contract rent.
I mean, the, the way that the vouchers work is that the, unless they are disability or not working for a specific reason, usually the voucher doesn't do the whole charge. It's, it's, the, the resident has to pay thirty percent. But what we learned the other day was that, you know, even if the resident pays thirty percent and wants to pay more just to fill the gap, the, they can't. The contract wouldn't be.
But the twenty-five hundred is a great example, because we're talking about twenty-five hundred.
We're talking
If the voucher's fifteen hundred, the percentage of, what, thirty percent of twenty-five hundred would be seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. So we're talking about fifteen hundred plus seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. You know, now we're at two thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, and that gap could be covered by policy that we're kind of doing here from an inclusionary perspective.
So President, that's not quite how it works, right? So thirty, they pay thirty percent of their monthly adjusted income for rent.
Oh, not thirty percent.
That's rent and utilities.
No, no.
Got it, got it.
So, you know, an example would be if it's a thousand dollars, the contract rent is a thousand dollars, the Housing Authority would say your share would be thirty, three hundred dollars. However, we would also, we also look at the utilities. If the utilities are a hundred, hundred dollars, then we would tell the tenant that they pay two hundred to the owner and a hundred for their utilities.
Got it. So you subtract the utilities away from what they? Okay, so an example.
So my question is, who are gonna pay for the gap? Where's that money going from?
That's what we're talking about in the subsidy. That's, that's where the subsidy comes along.
Yeah, that's what we're trying to figure out. Yep, it's a, it's a complicated math problem. So, but it's a good, good question.
The other thing I would ask you to keep in mind is our, our families, the majority of them are at thirty percent of the A M I. So many of the developers, their, their requirements may be sixty, they pay sixty percent, they'd be at this sixty percent A M I threshold, which the majority of our participants are not.
Well, right, so we would have to change this to say fifty percent or below area median income in order for that to
Correct.
We have the definition of deeply low.
We do have it in here, yep. But we don't, we're only requiring that for an additional five percent of the units if there is additional subsidy. So that, that's how it's written here right now.
I have another question. Is, is there any subsidy? Is it right near there, there's no subsidy, am I correct?
No, right now, the bill applies only to developments that are already getting a subsidy, whether it's tax credits, whether it's a pilot, whether it's a T I F, you know, all of that. So what we're seeing with an addition, with the fifteen percent, proposed fifteen percent tax credit, it would fill the gap even if they already have subsidy. And then with the, the vouchers or any other subsidies to house folks below fifty percent of A M I, that would be something added to it. So if you're not getting any subsidy at all and you're paying for this out of pocket and you've got other financing, you don't even have to comply. At the moment. That can change if we come up with a fifteen percent and then incentivize others to be able to, to, you know, participate. Certainly not out of the question.
Madam Commissioner?
I just, I'd like to ask a clarifying question of my colleague to help on some of the H A B C conversations around the vouchers, around the rent reasonableness. So if we have a market rate project where a two-bedroom unit is three thousand dollars for that two-bedroom unit, is there, looking at the different census tract components, you know, let's say it was in a census tract that allowed a hundred and twenty percent of the fair market rent or some, or along those lines, and the two-bedroom advertised, it's an advertised two-bedroom unit of three thousand dollars, would the rent reasonableness still come into play on some of the projects, which would prohibit the vouchers
Yes.
from being used at all? So that's the other piece where I think when we talked about, you know, the original message that D H C D got from the council as well as the advocates was no waivers whatsoever moving forward, which we agree, like, we didn't want to be in that position as an agency. You know, we've said, we want something that works and that is, you know, effective at creating new units based on, you know, financial feasibility, et cetera. So I think there's something to be known there that it, the potential for the vouchers might only work in specific areas, because it's not just the number of vouchers, but it still is also project-based, based off of that development. So if that development has rents that are going, you know, starting out at X Y Z and you end up at a two-bedroom, there really is no use, you know, for the voucher in that. They wouldn't be able to even qualify for that voucher based on rent reasonableness to have come into play. So there'd be a wa, even though there were vouchers available, there would need to be a waiver given for that project. So I think that there could be some space here, but it still will mean that there will be, there could be projects, inclusionary projects, that would not qualify based on what the market rate is, et cetera. So we'd be having to give a waiver on that piece. So it's, the payment standards and the fair market rents also apply with the rent reasonableness, which creates another layer where the vouchers just also are not like a one-hundred percent easy solution to get to that inclusionary unit. So that's all.
The problem is you can't put the subsidy with the renter and not with the unit, because that'll throw off their income. Is that right?
It's not included in their income.
So, no, I'm saying like a different subsidy to, to, I'm saying like, if, if we took some of the money we're talking about here and we tried to do this, like this voucher program, right now, we have looked at inclusionary housing to go with the unit. I'm saying like if we look, reframed our, our thought process in inclusionary housing and the subsidies went with the renter, the problem there is that it'll change the income and that's why, I don't, I don't
It depends on what the subsidy is, because currently, the voucher, if you're, if you're on a voucher where you take the voucher to a landlord, that's not included in your income.
I mean, so maybe we, we shift the focus from looking at subsidy on the unit, but subsidy with the individual, because that would solve that issue, no?
Uh, no.
Because then they wanna, and then they'd have, it wouldn't, the voucher would be
It still wouldn't affect their income.
But they, they still do the same rent reasonableness test and payment standards when it comes to the voucher holders as well.
I got it.
We would set the contract rent. Once we set that contract rent, there's no side agreements and the contract rent is the contract rent.
Got it.
Yeah, the other proposal that I had, which gave everybody heart failure, so we may not be able to, we probably won't do it now, is, you know, we, we need to just completely sort of rethink how we do our, our tax credits. I mean, there's other jurisdictions that if we did a development impact fee geographically and then said, you know, you don't have to pay the fee if you, you know, do inclusionary, that's, that's one way to do it, but we're, I think, not there quite yet. So, and Councilman Torrance just walked in. So I think we've, you know, we've still got some things to discuss and I'm grateful that so many people have come to the table to, to discuss it. And we're hoping to be able to come up with a resolution soon, because we've already been dealing with this for over a year. And we're out of compliance for over six months now, so, but I do, it's, it's, it's clear that this is a priority. So I'm, I'm grateful that the, you know, committee has been working with us on this and, and grateful to my colleagues. I'm grateful to the mayor's office, to the commissioner and your staff. H A B C, thanks for helping us through the complicated math on this, and also the Department of Finance as well, and of course, advocates and everybody here, because I do think that, you know, obviously, we know that this is super important, we just, we just need to get there. And hopefully, with more discussion coming up soon, hopefully, we can, we can get there. So I, I don't have anything else on our agenda today, Mr. Chair, unless you have something else.
No, thank you. The only thing I'll say is, Deputy Director, if you could help us out with some modeling and some projections, kind of the numbers that you guys always bring to us, I just think seeing it up there would like change the, the, our perspective and our appreciation for like the, some of the numbers that you're putting together.
Sure, we can, we can do that. We've built some of that and I know we've had conversations about what the right numbers are for are for, for different thresholds. I mean, we were happy to bring that and show kind of the differences and what, and what that would mean in the modeling.
Thank you. And the only, we're not allowed for testimony. Are you okay with that?
Oh, if you'd like.
It's only one person that signed up.
Sure.
Mr. President, could I?
Others are interested.
Could I ask a question before?
Sure.
Appreciate it. So just trying to, trying to nail this down. So the discrepancy right now is over whether this should be a citywide program or limited to core areas and then the 60% versus 80% AMI. Is that kind of, that's it? Okay.
That's the crux of the matter at the moment.
Okay.
If we're using the 15, 1.5% tax credit, yes.
And the number of years.
Yeah, and the number of years.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. We'll just do a, if, if folks want to speak, we appreciate everyone for consistently coming out. Obviously, you guys just don't want to sit there and be talked to. But if, if, if you do have something to add to the discussion, we're going to allow, the committee's going to allow two-minute testimony for anybody that would like to speak. I only have one person that signed up on this list, but if you, by short hands, if you guys could raise your hand, who would like to speak? Is anybody out there that would like to speak? I see one hand. All right, so we got four minutes. The first name, person I have signed up is Doug Schmidt, see here?
I don't have to speak though.
If you want to speak, you got two minutes. You don't have to, we're not begging you.
I'll make it quick.
All right.
So thank you all for having me. I really appreciate being involved in this process. I've been trying to add the, the finance piece of how a project works, how capital markets work, and how we look to attract investment to the city and what the impacts of, of this law could be. I think if people can keep in mind, as Director Sennome said, one of the dangers is if we burden the projects to the point that they don't get built, then we also don't get any inclusionary units. So just also to keep in mind, folks talk about other municipalities and how does this work in Montgomery County and other areas. Many of those areas have rapid growth and although the, the inclusionary units may reduce the benefits or the profitability of some of the projects, at worst, they slow down rapid growth. We're in a city where we're shrinking and we're trying to grow. So I think if people just keep in mind that there are both benefits to the proposal, but there are also a lot of risks as far as other tax base, et cetera. So we're happy to continue to, to bring our real-life models to the discussion and be as helpful as we can in crafting a good bill.
Have you guys put together any of those models?
We have.
Could you send it to the committee?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. The councilwoman has them and I'd be happy to send them around.
You could get them, Larry.
Just so everyone knows, they're based on certain assumptions, so different projects are different. And so I think that's where, it's sort of the devil's in the details, but there's a number of models that we can use to evaluate different types of projects, what the impacts would be and how they could impact the profitability and the attractiveness of investment to the city.
Thank you. So Councilwoman Ramos is going to make sure you have them. Larry, if you could send it out to the entire committee. I think there's another person who would like to speak. Come on up. The Price is Right.
Thank you. We didn't think we were allowed to.
I know, but you folks have been sitting here, listening to us talk, you know, bobbling heads.
There were a number of occasions where, where we would have wanted to chime in, I assure you. Let me just.
Kind of like watching CNN or MSNBC when someone says something that you disagree with, but can you just speak here? State your name for the record.
Can I take this down to talk?
Yeah. Please state your name and organization.
Barbara Samuels, now retired former Fair Housing Director, ACLU. So on this issue, let me just clarify on this issue of using vouchers. So if you have a multifamily building and if the rents in the other market rate or unassisted, as HUD calls it, units in the building are 2,500, then rent reasonableness does not preclude you from approving a lease if the payment standard allows 2,500. So it's, under HUD regulations, by definition, it's rent reasonable if the unassisted units in a multifamily dwelling are, have, have that rent. In terms of the payment standard, the payment standard can be changed. And if the rents in an area are consistently rising above the payment standard, then what should be done is the payment standard should be increased or the 135% should be applied to more areas. So these are all things that we can work on in order to, to make that work. And I, I think it's a great idea and to, to use project-based vouchers in, in these inclusionary projects. For that matter, we could use money that the city has, public housing monies that the city has available to do that because we've certainly been shedding public housing units. And so there are all sorts of funding sources that can be used and can be cobbled together in combination and often are. Affordable housing developers know how to do it. They can train some of the market rate developers who are not used to using some of those sources in order to put those funding stacks together. So that there's, there's a lot of options for doing that.
Thank you very much for adding that to, to today's discussion. Matt, you would like to say something?
Thanks for doing that. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Matt Hill, Attorney at Public Justice Center. I'll be really brief and I appreciate everyone's good faith in working through this and, you know, discussion we had just this morning was really productive. I do think that there's a cost that hasn't been emphasized here enough, and that's the cost of doing nothing. Because I hear Mr. Sennome, Sennome talking about the cost and I, I hear you, there are a lot of needs and there's a limited pot of money. But the cost of doing nothing is continuing the same mistakes that have concentrated poverty that have resulted in perpetuated segregation. And you're just talking about resegregating schools, you're talking about more folks not having opportunities for the jobs and the transportation that they need. And so if we don't find a way to do a truly meaningful inclusionary housing policy, the cost of doing nothing is repeating the exact mistakes of the past that got us here before. So I, I understand that you were making a really interesting point this morning about how you see the brownfield credits and the high-performance credits differently. But, you know, the city spent, had a tax expenditure of $38 million on those credits in FY 2022. So if those credits could be modified in some way, shave a couple million dollars off of those and put that toward truly affordable, integrated, inclusionary housing, that would make a lot of sense to me and I think to a lot of Baltimore City residents. So I would suggest that the, the council move forward boldly on this plan and if the savings come later from recalibrating the, the tax credits as Mr. Sennome suggested, that'd be a wonderful solution. So thank you very much for your time.
No, thank you. And I'll just say this for the record, I've said this a couple times while we've been here. I think another pie that we don't talk about often is the pilot. And, you know, we, we come back and we renegotiate these pilots every single year and it's a lot of money in the name of affordable housing. So that could be, again, an additional avenue. With that, are there any other questions or concerns for members of the committee? Hearing and seeing none, this will adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everyone, for tuning in. Have a safe trip home.